Good morning, everyone. We're gonna start now. Thank you so much. It's the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bills Number 140144, 140145, 140146, and Resolution Number 140159. Ms. Lewis, would you please read the titles of the bills and resolutions?
Bill Number 140144, An Ordinance to Adopt the Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2015 to 2020 Inclusive; Bill Number 140145, An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal 2015 Capital Budget; Bill Number 140146, An Ordinance to Adopt the New Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2015; and Resolution Number 140159, Providing for the Approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of a Revised Five-Year Financial Plan for the City of Philadelphia Covering Fiscal Years 2015 through 2019 and Incorporating Proposed Changes with Respect to Fiscal Year 2014, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the Mayor on January 3rd, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you. Today we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole to consider various bills read by Ms. Lewis, the constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal year 2015, a capital program, and forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2015 through fiscal 2020. We're here to testify today from the administration on the capital budget and the six-year capital plan. For our first witness, we will have our good friends from budget and from planning.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. I'm Gary Jastrab, Executive Director of the City Planning Commission. Joining me today is Rebecca Reinhardt, the city's budget director. We're here today to present for your review and consideration the recommended fiscal year 2015 through 2020 capital program and fiscal year 2015 capital budget as approved by the City Planning Commission at its meeting of February 28th, 2014. The Philadelphia Home Rule Charter directs the City Planning Commission to prepare and submit to the mayor a recommended capital program and budget. The recommended program is a six-year plan for investing in our city's physical and technology infrastructure, neighborhood and community facilities, and public buildings. The budget recommends spending appropriations for the first year of the six-year program. The projects included in the recommended program and budget support the overall goals of the city: Philadelphia becoming one of the safest cities in America, the education and health of Philadelphians improving, Philadelphia as a place of choice, Philadelphia becomes the greenest and most sustainable city in America, and Philadelphia government works efficiently and effectively with integrity and responsiveness. Beginning each September, the City Planning Commission staff works closely with the Finance Department's Office of Budget and Program Evaluation, the Department of Public Properties' Capital Projects Division, and city operating departments to prepare the recommended capital program and budget. It's a collaborative, labor-intensive, and iterative process, and we believe it yields a program and budget that carefully balances the city's facility needs with limited capital As in years past, the availability of city tax-supported general obligation or GO bond funding for capital projects depends upon two factors: the debt limit imposed by the city -- on the city by the Pennsylvania Constitution, and the city's financial capability -- capacity to service debt on borrowed funds. Since the actual value initiative has taken effect, the total assessed value in the city has increased substantially, which has in turn significantly increased the room under the constitutional debt limit. However, the city's tax-supported capital funding is still constrained by the ability to pay for debt service in our operating budget. Despite these constraints, the administration is committed to maximizing its investment in the city's physical infrastructure. For the 2015 capital budget, the administration proposes to spend $131.5 million of city-supported capital funding raised through new GO bonds issued by the city, and $14.5 million of previously authorized GO loans, for a total of $146 million. This represents a 44% increase in new GO funding from last year, and a 48% increase over the average amount of GO funding during the fiscal 2009 to 2014 period, during which the average amount of GO funding was $89.1 million per year. Key projects include continued programmed improvements to Park and Recreation Department, as well as police, fire, and free library facilities, investment to improve and modernize the city's technology infrastructure, to repave streets and repair bridges, to support neighborhood commercial centers, industrial districts, and build better connections to and along our riverfronts, and purchase much-needed specialty vehicles and equipment for departmental operations. A total of 69 new projects for 20 city departments are included in the fiscal 2015 budget year. In addition, 319 projects totaling $290.8 million of previously appropriated GO funds are recommended to be carried forward into fiscal year 2015. When all budget year funding is considered, including federal, state, and other sources, as well as projects for the Water Department and Aviation, these projects total more than $3.2 billion of improvements for the fiscal 2015 budget year in the recommended capital program. For the six-year program, $761.6 million of city tax-supported bond funding is planned for public improvements and neighborhood investments. When all sources of funding are included, the recommended capital program includes more than $9.4 billion of improvements during the fiscal 2015 through 2020 period. I'd like to highlight a number of projects in the 2015 budget year that support the city's five strategic goals described earlier. Projects that help Philadelphia become one of the safest cities in America increase safety from crime, emergencies, and accidents at home, school, and in the neighborhood, and at work and play. More than $3 million of new and previously authorized city funds are recommended for police facility renovations across the city, and for the completion of the conversion of the former Woodhaven U.S. Army Reserve Facility for police use. The Philadelphia prison system is recommended to use $5.8 million in previously authorized city funds for security system, infrastructure, and other renovations at its facilities in northeast Philadelphia. New city funding of $3.9 million is recommended for structural, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing renovations, and other site work at fire stations across the city. Projects that ensure the education and health of Philadelphians help to create complete neighborhoods with ample cultural, health, and human services opportunities. Recommended free library improvements total nearly $2.2 million in new city funds for HVAC, infrastructure, and interior and exterior renovations at numerous library locations. Nearly $1.6 million in new city funds are recommended for the Office of Supportive Housing to make improvements at its shelters, which serve some of the city's most vulnerable populations. New city funding totaling $850,000 is recommended for infrastructure improvements at the Philadelphia Zoo, which provides a great educational opportunity for the city's children and adults alike. Projects that make Philadelphia a place of choice promote economic development and job creation, and support major infrastructure improvements. More than $690.1 million of federal, state, private, and city self-sustaining operating and revenue bond funds are recommended to enable Philadelphia International Airport to improve service for air traffic and travel to and from Philadelphia through airfield and facility improvements, and safety and security projects. The Commerce Department is recommended to continue to invest $5 million annually in new city funds to improve neighborhood commercial centers, $2.5 million in city funds for infrastructure improvements in Center City to support the new Comcast Tower, and $900,000 to begin the transformation of the Redding Viaduct into an elevated community and regional park. New city funding totaling $22.3 million is recommended for the Streets Department to grade, pave, and make other improvements to city roadways, historic streets, stairways, and curb ramps, and new infrastructure. This funding will leverage $45.8 million in federal, state, and private funds. Nearly $10.5 million in new city, federal, and state funding are recommending -- are recommended for plans and improvements along the Central and North Delaware Riverfronts and the Schuylkill River Waterfront. The Philadelphia Museum of Art is recommended to use $3 million in new city funding to implement interior and exterior improvement projects in support of its multi-year facilities master plan. Projects that help Philadelphia become the greenest and most sustainable city in America focus on parks and recreation, and promote environmental and sustainable practices. The Office of Sustainability is recommended to use $500,000 in city funds for energy efficiency improvements at city facilities in support of other capital investments. More than $16.9 million in new and previously authorized funds are recommended for improvements to the Park and Recreation Department's trails, parks, recreation centers, pools, cultural facilities, and other assets across city neighborhoods, and for other projects including the Benjamin Franklin Parkway and the Bartram's Mile Greening and Trail Project. More than $2.5 million in new city funds are recommended for the Streets Department to continue the reconstruction of the city's northeast incinerator to be energy efficient, safer, and more functional. Septa Bridge, Track Station, power supply, and fare collection improvements help make transit an attractive alternative to driving. More than $3.6 million in new city funds are recommended to leverage more than $189.3 million in state, federal, and other monies for such projects. Projects that enable Philadelphia's government to work efficiently and effectively with integrity and responsiveness foster a high-performing public sector that works better at less cost. A continued major investment of $24 million of new city funding is recommended for the Office of Innovation and Technology for citywide technology modernization and improvement projects such as One Philly, which will modernize the city's workforce management processes, and Lock &amp; Track, which is a new inmate management solution. Additionally, $5 million is recommended for a new message switch system to improve public safety informa -- to include -- to improve a public safety information exchange system between the city and Commonwealth. Nearly $2 million of new city funds are recommended for the Department of Public Property to continue making functional improvements to major city government facilities, including City Hall, the Criminal Justice Center, and the Municipal Services Building. The Office of Fleet Management is recommended to use $10 million to purchase specialty vehicles used as equipment for various departments, including fire and streets. These highlights demonstrate the range and variety of projects recommended for funding in the fiscal 2015 budget, and shows how the recommended capital program seeks to make strategic and targeted investments in Philadelphia's infrastructure, using our limited resources for the greatest public benefit. Thank you for your attention. My colleagues and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have. Please note that the leadership of city departments is present, in addition to representatives from the Department of Finance and the Department of Public Property to assist in answering your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Couple of quick questions. The -- page two, you talk about the debt limit imposed by the city for borrowing purposes by Pennsylvania Constitution has increased. How much has that debt limit increased?
Council President, good morning. The debt limit increased dramatically. The new debt limit set by the Constitution is about $3 billion. So there's $1.4 billion of room now under the constitutional debt limit. So I'm sure, as you know, we used to be right up against the constitutional debt limit, and with the assessed value of property going from $12 billion to $99 billion, with the actual value initiative, the constitutional debt limit increased substantially. There are still, of course, limitations on how much debt we can issue because we have to pay the principal and interest in our operating budget.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Do you anticipate a further increase over the next several years, or do you expect the base to pretty much even out, or are we looking at a continued growth in the base?
Increase in the debt limit, do you mean? Or?
Well, the base -- I mean, the debt limit is based on?
The assessed value. It's actually -- it's based on a 10-year average of assessed value. So as -- the debt limit will increase as more years of the higher value get factored into the 10-year average. But if the question is, do we think that the assessed value of the city will?
That's my --
That's your question, okay.
My backdoor way of asking.
Okay, I got your question. The assessed value of the city in the operating budget in the out-years of the plan, we have projected growing about 3% a year.
Okay, we're still sticking to 3%?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Commercial Carter money on the capital program, page 21, it appears that the commercial Carter dollars are reduced to 1.5 in FY15, and we have been anticipating a $5 million number across -- is there a reason why there was a reduction?
You know, we can talk about that. I think that there was some thought about, you know, lowering it to keep the overall debt limit -- the debt levels down, but we don't have a problem increasing that back in the -- from 16 to 20, back to 5 million.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of like the -- it was an agreement last year when we were dealing with capital programs, and council members would like -- wanted to see an additional dollar figure associated with commercial carters. So that was kind of like the city council's deal. And now we're increasing the debt limit capacity. We have more borrowing capacity, and it's kind of inconsistent, we're reducing the commercial Carter money. It's like, well, why are we reducing commercial Carter money when it has nothing to do with debt limit?
Well, we --
So is there a de-emphasis on the commercial carters?
No, I mean, to be clear, we have the 5 million in the fiscal 15 capital budget. We just had it reduced down in the out-years of the capital program. And one of the things is, even though the debt limit is going up, we still have to be mindful of the debt service on the debt. But with all that said, I think that's an area where we can have discussion to move that back up next year, because it doesn't impact this year's capital budget.
Okay. What's the status of that program? Are we on track? I mean, I know there are a number of carters. I'm actually familiar with the ones in my district.
Sure.
Which I haven't seen any activity. I don't know, maybe you're doing other districts.
I could have Karen Fegley from the Commerce Department come up and give an update on that program.
Can you please?
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Yes, as you know, we've got a number of projects going on. Most of the FY14-funded projects are still in the design phase, as are some of the FY13. So we have a long list of projects. We've talked to many, I think, all of you about sort of a list of priority projects, and we kind of go through a criteria process to prioritize each year, because the $5 million basically funds two projects a year. So we're trying to spread those around and make sure we hit targeted commercial corridors around the city.
Is there any activity taking place anywhere in the city?
Construction right now?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're -- I understand the pre-development phase is the boring part.
I was gonna say, there's a lot that are in design. I know that's --
At some point.
It gets old to hear that, but the design and engineering phase is a really long process. Let's see. We've done some little things, some sort of what I was calling some à la carte things. We've done some of the bus shelters and Big Belly installations, and gotten those done, and --
Those are not capital, right?
They were tied to the capital project. So those pieces are done.
Big Bellies?
The larger construction isn't done. We -- I'm just looking. Do you want to hear the ones that are in design, or the ones?
Yeah, I mean, we had a conversation a year, so actually, this is not, as you know, a new program. This is a continuation.
Absolutely.
So I'm just wondering when we're gonna start seeing some activity on some of these commercial carters.
Right.
I mean, the commercial carters that we saw done were part of the old NTI process, and we basically asked you all to extend that.
Right.
And put additional dollars in the budget. So I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of it.
Right. So there was a little pause in between when we finished up with the last -- with the bond dollars.
Right.
And so then we finished up. The Germantown Avenue project got finished in 2013. The East Falls Gateway project got finished. We did some lighting on Haverford Avenue.
I see.
And then there was a pause where we then had to gear up and start design on a number of projects. So North 22nd Street, Germantown and Lehigh, Stenton Avenue, North Broad Street's about to start. That's been bid, I believe.
You say North Broad, is that the Avenue of the Arts in North Broad?
Correct.
That has nothing to do with this capital program, right? Was this state funding for that? Or old money?
It's a number of funding sources. There is a piece of --
Some in there.
-- piece of it is some of this capital dollars.
All right. Well, let me not grill you, because I know we have time. Can you just give us a chart, charting out each capital, commercial Carter capital project in the various council districts?
Yeah.
To kind of give us a status report, if it's in design, or if it's in pre-construction?
Absolutely.
Because I'm, you know, we -- actually, I think the last time we talked to you was the last year, maybe during this process. So it would be helpful if we can kind of know what's going on.
Right, right. Yeah, and we've been checking in with people along the way, but absolutely, I have the -- I have a chart. We can send that to everyone.
Okay. Yeah, if you can just have that forwarded to us.
Okay.
We'll make sure all the members get it.
Yep.
Thank you. One last question. Do we have any -- and this has been this ongoing debate about surveillance cameras across the city of Philadelphia, and at one point, I recall, actually, Mr. Gillikson being here, talking about, as his role as deputy mayor for public safety, about a robust camera surveillance program. And can you tell me if, one, that program is proceeding, or, two, are we actually investing in the purchase of cameras and purchase of technology to accommodate additional cameras? Can you tell me where we are with that?
Sure. From a budgetary perspective, we are investing. There is about $600,000 in IT's operating budget, and $1 million of capital that they're putting towards new cameras and fixing existing cameras. In addition to that, there's also a camera program going on at the rec centers that you're probably well aware of, to install cameras at the rec centers.
Right.
So, but if I think --
Isn't the majority of that money coming from the council districts?
That's correct.
I T E F.
That's correct. That's correct. The money, and then that's coming from the council districts, and then the money that I spoke of, the $600,000 of operating funds, and about $1 million in capital funds, is
-- For the entire city?
I'm sorry?
For the entire city? That's not like a lot of money.
Right, well, it's part of a larger program, and IT could speak to that if you're interested in hearing from them.
I'm just, you know, we had this conversation a couple of years ago about aggressive surveillance camera program, and I understand that we've expanded it to private cameras, but more often than not, when we see reference to the cameras and the ability to enhance the police officers in the department to deal with a crime, it's in the aftermath of a crime. So we go around and kind of like ask the store owners and private citizens, can we get the camera feed? And I thought, at least from our perspective, our earlier approach was to have very visible cameras to deter, prevent crime, because people knew that they were being watched.
Right, and that is what --
And then we -- so I'm like, $1 million, that's not a lot.
Well, it's part of a larger program, and maybe either police or IT could speak to it. I don't know who would be -- okay.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Delve CIO for the City of Philadelphia. So a couple of things, in addition to what Rebecca said. The dollars that were put in the operating budget went to support two additional FTEs that are solely dedicated to maintenance and upkeep of the cameras.
What's an FTE?
I'm sorry, a full-time equivalent. So two staff members.
All right.
Apologize. They are solely dedicated to the maintenance and upkeep of the cameras. We've also contracted with a vendor to augment our efforts. Today, we fluctuate anywhere between 89% and 92% of all the cameras that are owned by the city, maintained by the city, as up and running.
Operable?
Yes.
Not inconsistent with the controller's report?
The controller's report is quite old right now, and it looked at almost a very small sample of cameras. They indicated 43% last year. Our numbers, which are published actually publicly, are anywhere between 89 and 92% depending on -- from month to month.
How many cameras do we have?
So I believe 219 cameras are in the original inventory of city cameras. We don't count cameras that are enrolled in the Safe Cam, which are the privately managed cameras, although we have access to it, police has access to it in the event of something happening. We don't count those in the original number.
Right. All right. I'm actually gonna come back.
Sure.
For a more robust conversation about cameras today. But right now, I would like to, and for my colleagues, because we have a lot of people teed up in the first round, if we can do five minutes, please. Okay? Thank you. Chair, Recognize Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mr. President. All right, good morning. Last year I asked questions about employment goals for the capital program. Specifically, I asked how many Philadelphians will be employed through the capital program. The written response that I received says, "We do not know how many Philadelphians will be employed through the FY14 capital budget. As we are unable to predict where workers will reside, we can only estimate the number of total construction jobs to be created, which is 730. While we cannot predict where workers will reside, we are now able to track the employment of Philadelphians for public works projects through the Labor Compliance Plan software." My question is, are 730 jobs being created through this year's capital budget, and how many have gone to Philadelphians?
I would say to that, this year's city-supported capital budget is larger than last year's, so I would say the number should be greater. There's an actual calculation that we can do and send to you. But how many are Philadelphians, the second part of your question?
Last year I asked you to project how many jobs would be created. You said you could not do that, but that you could track it.
Okay.
And that you estimate that 730 jobs would be created. You could not tell whether they'd be residents or not until the project started. I'm saying, as we're into the fiscal year, spending capital money, do we still intend to create 730 jobs through this year's capital budget, and how many have gone to Philadelphians since you said you have the ability to track it through Labor Compliance Plan software?
I would have Angela Doud Burton come up about the tracking software. She's in the audience. And I would think in terms of the number of jobs, the estimate would still hold, but I'll have Angela talk about the tracking.
Good morning, Councilman Good and members of council. My name is Angela Doud Burton. I am Executive Director of the Office of Economic Opportunity. With regard to the labor tracking system, this is a system, LCP Tracker, was installed January of 2014. Based on a review of the system, I guess approximately two weeks ago now, there were four projects in the system. The Labor Standards Unit is in the process of enrolling contractors.
Ms. Doud Burton, do we know how many jobs have been created this fiscal year, and how many went to Philadelphians?
No, I do not.
Okay, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Good. Chair, Recognize Councilman Kinney?
Thank you, Mr. President. Looking at items relative to the Fire Department and capital improvements, there are about 11 items listed. Nine of them are for fire stations in the amount of $10,000. And then I have one for $375,000. I assume that's worth an arch because of the extensive damage.
Looking at items relative to the fire department and capital improvements, there are about 11 items listed. Nine of them are for fire stations in the amount of $10,000. And then I have one for $375,000. I assume that's worth an arch because of the extensive damage that was done when it went on fire. And then I have $650,000 for elevators for the headquarters building. I've been in a number of firehouses in my career. They're pretty deplorable places to work and to live, and I don't know what you could accomplish with $10,000 for a station house. That couldn't go very far at all. And then we're spending over a half a million dollars at the headquarters for elevators? And I'll go further to say that I support the project in West Philadelphia for the new police headquarters. I think it's a good use of the property, and I think it's needed out there. That's a multi-multi-million dollar project, and police stations in our, and detective headquarters in our city are, again, in a deplorable condition. How do we justify spending large amounts of money for the bosses to work in and very little of any money for the rank and file to work in?
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
On the fire department's capital budget, there's $600,000 total in fiscal 15 for fire station renovations, for sidewalks and paving, and then another $500,000 for roof replacements, and then a million for structural renovations at various fire stations. So you're correct, you're correct, and actually, as I'm looking even more that there's, then there's four specific firehouses, engine six, ladder 16, engine 13?
Yeah, that's the list I'm looking at.
Okay, right, engine 25, engine 19, that are all getting, well, from between $175,000 and $375,000. So there's a lot of stations that are getting, there are many stations that are getting funding for improvements in significant dollars. There is also the elevator funding at $650,000 for the headquarters, because there needs to be a balance of priorities in terms of fixing the stations and fixing the headquarters. There's people that work at headquarters and people that work at the stations, so we go-
Have you been in a fire station lately?
Yeah, I've been in a fire station.
Do you find that the conditions there, they're acceptable to live? Actually, firehouses are houses, you actually live in it. I mean, I've been in some kitchens and some bathrooms in those station houses that are, I wouldn't want to use, and we're kind of insisting that people work there. Fire headquarters is a relatively new building. It's only about three or four, I think it's like three stories high or four stories high. Why would we spend over a half a million dollars on elevators when I go into a neighborhood station house and it's terrible?
Well, as I just said, there is money set aside, significant money set aside for stations, and then there's $650,000 for the fire administration building. But the amount set aside for the stations is larger, and 1.1 million for those four, plus another 600, another 1.2 million. I mean, there's a significant amount of money put aside for the stations themselves. If you want a reason for what's going on with the elevators and why there's an elevator problem, I mean, I could have public property come up and discuss-
We have an elevator problem here. Our bank down the hallway has one elevator for the last number of months that I can remember.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe elevators are an issue, but I will continue to assert that the condition of our fire stations and police stations are deplorable in general, and I think that if we're going to build a new kind of headquarters palace in West Philly, and we're going to fix this place up on Spring Garden Street, I think we ought to pay a little more attention to our rank and file needs, and, I mean, I find it distressing, frankly.
Okay. Do you want to, you'd have to introduce yourself. I would say, though, that there's a balance, and we are putting money into police and fire stations.
Gary Knappick, Deputy Commissioner, Department of Public Property for Capital Projects. Councilman, I just would just add to what you're saying, which I totally agree with, that we do have to maintain accessibility at the fire administration building, so-
But you agree, I mean, just from your perspective, as far as the condition of police stations and firehouses, they're not exactly what we should be proud of.
We certainly need to invest in those stations. The problem being that the ages of those stations, they're well up there, and a lot of them need replacements.
But there's a lot of nice, older buildings in the city that are-
Certainly are, certainly are, and they're usually a little more expensive to fix.
I hear you. All right, I would like that to be a priority, because we've been talking about it for years.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilwoman.
A few questions, and I know my colleague, Councilman Kenny, will follow up on one issue, and that is, we had finance hearing last week with regard to the site at 4601 Market Street, where we're talking about bringing the police administration building. And at that time, we also brought up the request, the issue of additional $50 million for police and fire station repair. And it was suggested at that point that we wait until today to deal with the issue, to bring it up in this process, because that's the formal way to do it. Would you let us know what you would like for us, Councilman Kenny? In fact, he brought the idea to me, thank you, and we're interested in working on that, and let us know how you would like it to proceed.
In terms of funding for police and fire stations, there is significant money that we've put in over the last few years for police stations that's in progress to do station repairs. So there's about $13 million of money right now for police stations that's available, that's being worked on in design, in the beginning stages of the project stage. So there is significant money there at this point. If we can have a discussion about more money, if that's what you're talking about, we can always have a discussion about that.
Well, that's exactly what we're talking about, and so we'd like to set that up so that we can proceed with this while we're in this phase. We were prepared to proceed, and so we're trying to do it the proper way to get consideration, so definitely we're interested in that conversation.
Okay, we can set that up.
All right. Number two, I have in my third district on my sheet for records, records improvements, city hall security improvements, $200,000. Can you tell me what that is?
Yeah, I apologize, I had mentioned this to one of your staffers, but that was a mistake, that was put in an error. That's in city hall, so obviously not in the third district.
So that means I get that $200,000 from the third?
It doesn't really work that way, but-
And I want to know if, is Ms. Wearden, I didn't see her from the library, see her today?
Ms. Wearden, is it, who did you ask? Okay, I don't think she's here today. Jim Pacora is here in her absence.
All right. I just wanted to follow up on the old George's Library, that program, and she can get back to me on it. We've been talking about it for a couple of years.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. City Hall is in the fifth district. Could you tell me what that's for, please?
I'll split it with you, Mr. President.
Okay, you can go make your deal.
You saw where I was going, right, Councilwoman?
It's for the records department. I believe it's for security glass for their interactions with the public. I think they've actually had some confrontations, people angry about getting their records.
Oh, so is that on all, I don't know, call them tellers, but what do you call them?
Yes, I don't know what they're called, but I'm-
But it's similar to that?
Yes, yes, yes.
There's no opportunity to have any physicals?
Right.
Really?
Yes.
And records?
Yes.
Wow. Things are pretty bad. Okay, thank you. Chair, Recognize Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. That quick? I know I get the short end, but come on now. So, good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
I have a couple of questions, and I probably won't get all of them answered in the first round, so, but let me get as many as I can in. Can you describe for me, number one, how many, what is the total value of the capital budget for this fiscal year? What does it represent in size?
The total budget across water and aviation in all funds is over $3 billion for fiscal 15.
And how many projects does that represent?
I think there were 69 projects in the budget year. Let me, 69 projects in the budget year, and then additionally, there are projects that had been funded, appropriated in previous years. 319 of those are carrying forward.
And in your answer to questions that we had last year, I believe you cited, I asked the question, and others did, what was the length of time that it takes to do a project? I think the low end you cite as 74 weeks, and the high end was somewhere upwards of 490 weeks, which represents about nine years?
Yes, that's what we testified to last year.
So at the best-case scenario, you might get a project done a year and a half. At the worst case, we might be touching a decade to get capital projects completed.
Well, those were the stats given last year in the testimony, which was the range.
So what was the mean? What was the?
So the average, when we looked at it, we looked at it last year, and the average length of time for a capital project is between three and four years. And that length is something that we are working on.
And it's my understanding, a part of it was attributed to the fact that there were over 250 steps that it takes to actually procure and actually construct a project.
Yes, there are, I can't, I can't say the exact number, but that doesn't sound unreasonable to the number of steps that we have, that we have many steps. We did, over the last year, have a capital working group that convened on this issue, and also, this is one of the things that I spoke to last year, that FTI Consulting had looked at when they looked at our report. So we had-
So has there been improvement from this year to last on shrinking the steps and shrinking the time?
I think there were, I'd have to check in to see what, if there were steps that were removed from that process. Part of it is that the steps, a lot of the steps need to be there, because, I'm not saying all 250, but a lot of the steps need to be there, because departmental sign-up is needed. But what we need is someone, are people that push it through the steps, so-
Question is, is there improvement? Have you cut down the time?
I would have to say that I don't know offhand what the time is, and we could look at it, we could look at it again.
There's something, Mr. Chairman, I would like to answer to.
Sure.
Secondly, how, what is the process by which you determine a good project versus a, one that you're going to pass on by way of capital improvement? What is that process?
Okay.
What are the criteria? What are the steps?
Okay, just to add something to your last question, and then I will go to this question. On the length of time, we have taken some steps to get at the issue. We've put in money for a new quality control group in capital to actually hold projects to timelines and to check change orders to keep costs down, so they'll be coming on board in fiscal 15 in this budget. So there are some things that we have done.
Right.
Now, to your next question.
So I want to know if it netted a reduction in time?
Okay.
You got a real answer? Give me a real answer.
I will get you back to you on it.
So my question now is, how do you determine that? And I'll get to why I'm asking these questions. Because we may, I'd need to know your process by which, when a councilperson recommends a capital improvement. I know back in the bad old days, we used to say, "Do curbs and sidewalks on this block, that block, or the other?" That did not make sense, and therefore, there was a rationale put into why you make a capital project. When we have a rationale of a reason why, how do you determine whether it is of merit or not?
I would say that we have limited resources in our capital budget, and we begin the process by looking at police and fire, parks, recs, streets. We have IT needs and fleet needs, and there's a lot of base needs, and we don't have really enough room to fund what we actually need to spend. So just in that, in that light, and I know, I know where you're going.
Uh huh.
Okay. In that, in that light, there are many, many things that we don't fund and that we don't put into the budget.
I just want to know the process, because if you tell me there's a process, "Councilman, you need to go A, and then go to B, and then go to C," and I do that, and there was no real A, B, or C, and I get frustrated as to what I should do to try to communicate that something has merit.
Right.
And I just need to know what that is so that I can follow the rules.
Okay.
And according to the Controller's report on, I believe it's, what was that? The Controller's, K O Z, for example. If there is an economic rationale to a capital improvement that will create jobs, as was mentioned, then that should be considered.
Right.
If there is, if we add curbs and sidewalks to a possible factor, then that makes sense. It makes sense to our bottom line, it's rational in its approach. If there is a process to determine what is rational, all I want to know is what it is so that I can bring things to the administration and say, "Hey, if you do this, that, and the other, we will, we will gain jobs, we will gain projects." But if I can't tell a developer, "Yeah, we'll, we'll look at moving a salt mound so that we can create a entrance to undeveloped acres," because they only have one entrance in and out, that does not make economic sense. I just want to know, and I can be wrong, and you could tell me no, but you have to give me a reason why there's a no, or not just let it die the vine of, because I'm nice, because I'm not like Bill Green. I felt some kind of way, so now we have.
Okay. So I appreciate your line of questioning, and I know that you're talking about the 52nd Street salt dome and moving that. We are interested in looking at that at this point, and I know that the Streets Commissioner reached out to you yesterday, and that you'll be walking the site tomorrow, I believe, so that we could come up with a better cost estimate of what you're looking to do. I think the last time, maybe a year or so ago, we were under the impression that it was a bigger project than it is. With that said, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm going to stop, because I'm going to be fair to my colleagues. The point is, if you tell me, "Councilman, you were late for, you were late, and you didn't get it in on time, and therefore, it was denied," I took it on the chin, I said, "Okay, I'm going to be early next year," and then I find out, "Bring me the bloom of the wicked witch of the West," you know, I'm going to always-
So there's a two-part process.
Councilpeople in general need to know, what is the process by which we make those requests?
So the process is, you have to get a request in, in order to be considered, okay? So if you don't get the request in, then it obviously can't be considered. If you get the request in, then it can be considered. Your project, maybe we didn't understand the full value of it, and so we will discuss with you further, but didn't make that first cut, but we will discuss with you further.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair, Recognize Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? I just have a couple of questions, and I wanted to start really just picking up where Councilman Kenny and also Councilwoman Blackwell left off regarding fire stations. I go to pretty much every city facility in my district to see what's going on. I've been to every school in my district, and I've been to most of the fire and the police stations, and I have to say that the conditions are completely unacceptable. And so when I see that we're spending, you know, a minimal amount overall on sidewalks and paving, when in some of our facilities, we have black mold and sewage in the basement and all sorts of things happening, so I really would like for you to, you know, help me understand what the thinking is, and also, I know that there are some, or there is some information out there in terms of what needs to be done. There has been some work done by the city in terms of what kind of repairs and what kind of things need to be done to these facilities, and can you tell me when that will happen? Is it on the radar, what's going to happen? Because to spend $10,000 on, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six fire stations for sidewalks and ramps, really just, in my opinion, just doesn't cut it when you see some of the conditions, and I want to invite you to go out with me to some of the fire stations in my district, and I think that you may want to revise some of these numbers after you see what I've seen.
Okay, I would be happy to. I would be happy to. I would-
I'll set it up.
Okay, great. I would point out that the, the amount for fire stations is, uh, about three point two, three point three million for the year. I know you're looking at the subcategory breakdown.
Right.
Um, and I think, uh, some of that probably needs some further refinement, uh, by public property, and I think they might be looking at, uh, a few bigger projects rather than those ten thousand dollar splits, because there is some thought that, that is too small for each station. Um, so, but the total amount is about three point two, three point three million, and then the six hundred and fifty thousand for the headquarter building, so three point nine million. Um, but again, I think there, there is, we don't have all of the resources we need to do everything we want.
Sure, no, I understand.
Um, so also on, on fire, we have about eight million dollars of money available from prior years, and that is in the process of being spent, and, uh, public property could detail out what those improvements are going to be for. So there's about the eight million dollars plus the three million dollars in new money. Um, altogether, public property could detail that out if you're interested.
I am.
Okay, I could call Gary Knappick.
And, um, and while they're coming forward, you know, I just wanted to mention that we said in the testimony that we wanted to, you know, the goal is to create complete neighborhoods, and I don't see how that could realistically be a goal if we have our own city facilities in complete disrepair in some of our most distressed neighborhoods. So we've got a neighborhood, it's already, you know, fighting for its own survival, and then we've got this, um, building, which is really turning out to be a burden in the community, it should be an asset, but the condition of the building really does lend itself to the overall condition of what's happening in the neighborhood, and it's not good. And so when we talk about building complete communities, you know, we really have, you know, if, if that's what we're gonna say we're gonna do, then I think we have to take it very seriously.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Karen, Council President, Gary Knappick, Department of Public Property. Um, to answer your question, um, right now in the Fire Department, um, we have about six point two million dollars actually in play in the budget. That pretty much exhausts the available carry-forward funding that is on the books right now. In other words-
Just the projects.
The projects, yeah, every, I could, I could list the projects and where that money goes individually if you'd like, or could send it to you. Um, but pretty much every dollar that's in the carry-forward money, oh, I'm sorry, carry-forward funding right now is in play in some way, shape, or form on a project, whether that project is in construction, in bid, or in design.
Do you want to list a few?
I could name a, a few for you.
Okay.
Um, we have, uh, as far as projects in design, we have about one point nine million of that six million in, uh, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements at Engines Eight, Ten, Nineteen, Eighteen, and Twenty-Five. Uh, another one point three for roof restorations at Engine Seventy-One, Seventy-Two, One Forty-Seven, Thirty-Three, and Sixty-Four. Um, we're working on Engine Eight right now, which was the, the fire station that, that had the, uh, the fire. There is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into that, and that's currently just going out for bid. Um, another in, in construction, uh, this is just going into construction right now, there is one point one million, that's pike of funding, going for structural restorations at Three Sixty-Nine, Seventy-One, Seventy-Two. Those structural restorations, by the way, are, are very key, because, uh, you know, in some cases, we have failure. Apparatuses are very heavy, and they destroy the apparatus floors, and when they're spanked, they'll begin into problems. The, the six hundred thousand dollars that you were, um, looking at in the budget really is going to go towards repair of paving and handicap accessibility issues in the fire stations as well.
Okay, um, I'll, I have some more questions, but I'll wait for the next round, but I think, um, you know, it's apparent to me that there is a real disconnect between, um, the folks who are on the ground in the fire stations and the folks who are, you know, allocating and determining, you know, how these resources are gonna be spent. I get it that we don't have enough money to do everything that we'd like to do, I mean, that's, that's pretty simple. But there has to be some priorities, there has to be, I mean, if we value our city employees, if we value the folks who will rush out and run into a burning building, um, then we have to really think about what kind of facility are we putting them in. And I gotta tell you, it's, uh, most of my facilities are in really bad shape. And so, uh, I am gonna set a, a, a meeting up or a tour up, and I'd like to do it before the callback period. And so, within the next week or two, I'd love for, to have the both of you come out and see what I have seen, which is very disturbing, because again, um, I do feel that there is some sort of a disconnect here, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tascow.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, where are my notes? Um, I see that you're appropriating, uh, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the, each district for improvement to existing facilities.
The seven ninety?
That is a decrease of what we've gotten before.
No, that's consistent.
Hey, pardon?
That is consistent. It's the seven ninety plus the four hundred and ten thousand, um, in, let me just pull it up, in finance money. So there's money in parks and rec, and then there's also money, right, there's seven hundred and ninety thousand in rec money, and then four hundred and ten thousand in finance money. So each district gets, uh, one point two million.
One point two million. Um, the Department, the Rec Department, do you also appropriate money to them for repairs or, uh, services at these rec centers, uh, with that, so that they don't have to ask us for our money? Or do they, uh, ask us for our money?
We, we, uh, put, uh, a much smaller amount in Parks and Rec's budget. Uh, so, the way the, the process, they're actually supposed to come out and ask the council members, um, for the money that's been allocated to your districts. Uh, the reason that the money's been allocated to the districts historically is to give each councilperson the say on what, what makes the most sense, uh, in terms of parks and rec improvements in your district. But that is, they are supposed to come and ask you for it. Okay?
Okay, that's all the questions.
Okay.
Are you done, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Good morning, folks. I know Council President mentioned that he wanted to talk a little bit around the commercial corridors. In your response to him, um, dated March twenty-first, uh, in addition to the five million dollars, there was a twelve point nine million dollar carryover. Um, if we can get that breakdown, and the reason is that this year, after six years, some of that money is actually going into my district. And so, my concern is the timeline, because if you're carrying over twelve point nine, then it took me six years to get a project that I'm not gonna get done for another three years. I'd like to know that. Um, so in terms of the timeline, I think that's important, because that's-
Okay, I'll have Karen, the Commerce Department.
I told that Congress to prepare, I'm trying to give her a heads up.
Okay.
She can prepare. Um, in the last couple of years, this council with the administration has been, um, committed to like restaffing up our maintenance units.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things, as we talk about this capital budget, one of the reasons we, we were going back to that was because we wanted to staff up our building trades component to be able to do some of this work. Are we outlining cost analysis of what it costs us to do stuff with internally versus when we're doing the external piece? Is anybody tracking that? And can we get, um, and maybe Bridget can come forward. The reason we did that is because everybody's frustrated about how long these capital projects take. And so I wanna know, have we improved, and how long does it take? Because if we are gonna get through this fire list and the police department list, we need to figure out what's the most efficient.
Right.
And so, is it working?
Yes, uh, Joe Palatino, the Deputy Property Commissioner, uh, can join us up here, um, to give some statistics on the program. Um, the preventative maintenance program-
Yep.
-where they now have about twenty-two people of the twenty-nine, uh, budgeted for, so pretty fully, uh, on the way to becoming fully staffed up in the, uh, preventative maintenance team that's focusing on police and fire stations. And he has some good data, which, uh, he can show. He's right here.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Uh, yes, and, and back to sort of the integration where capital meets facilities, uh, some of the projects that Gary brought up for the apparatus floor, uh, we were at Engine Fifty-One, and now we're at Engine Seventy, and what we do is, with those additional PM crew staff, we're in the facility at the same time doing a comprehensive interior renovation. Uh, and then what we plan to do is do that for those type of projects where we can integrate facilities and capital with those additional staff. We do have twenty-two out of the twenty-nine, uh, on, on staff right now, and, um, it's been a big success for us in trying to get ahead and do things more proactively. Um, we, uh, in the quarter-three, FY thirteen, the quarter-two, FY, uh, fourteen, we've been in a hundred and four facilities, and gone through most of back-house stuff, MEP, uh, and it's been significant. We've been doing a lot of like filter changes, um, mechanical improvements, shaking out plumbing fixtures that have been there for a long time, and, and, and looking for opportunities to coordinate with capital.
So my question is, if we ramp that up, could we get through some of these line items that the councilpeople are talking about are so frustrating in terms of the conditions of the facilities?
Well, the, it's a good question. I think, um, there's sort of two parts to this, because the preventative maintenance team is focusing on regular maintenance of the building so that they don't break, right? So that boilers don't explode, so that, you know, so they're causing, you know, that, so that, you know, roofs are fixed, are done better so that they don't leak. So it's preventative. Um, so it really, where it has savings is in preventing the capital need going forward. In terms of having a, um, small capital projects team on the police and fire side, that's interesting, um, because that, uh, Mike DeBredinas has done a great job, uh, of implementing that on the parks and rec side for the rec centers, uh, so to do the small capital projects. Um, but it, right now, that's focused on the parks and rec centers.
So let, so let me strongly encourage, um, using that baseline data at the Rec Department, where it's costing us, you know, fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars to fix a roof, to do that in the Fire Department and the Police Department.
Right.
And I think that we need to create that model. I mean, I think after six years, seven years of listening to the same conversation in terms of our long list of, of, of capital improvements, if it's more efficient and more effective, then we need to build that team out, um, so that we can get to kind of all those ticket items. Cause I, I think the reason all of us were invested in the preventive one, because we knew it makes sense long-term.
Right.
Now we need to build up to do the roof, the floor, you know, the bathrooms. Um, and, you know, I feel very comfortable that our public property, uh, team under our commissioner could get that done in a way that's more cost-effective, so that, you know, we can be more proactive on that. And so what I'm gonna ask is, if you can put forth, you know, what is the menu of what it costs us to do a roof internally versus externally? What does it cost us to do, um, all of the ticket items that the, the councilpeople are talking about? Because we moved away from an internal team, but folks will tell you that in the nineties, those teams, those internal teams were pretty robust, and we were getting to more ticket items. And so, I think we need to look at that. I know that the administration's been really resistant to that, but I think the maintenance side, on the Rec Department side and the public property, is showing us that that's where we need to be invested.
Yeah, and I don't know if, or at least, I, I wouldn't say that we're resistant to that. I think now, now that we have, um, the rec, the parks and rec model up and running and see what it's doing and how it's interacting, and I, I think that councilmembers are somewhat satisfied with the way that's working, hopefully. Um, I think so. And, um, now that we've seen that, I think that, you know, one of the recommendations coming out of, you know, the FTI study a year ago was to have teams to work on, on small capital projects. So that's, you know, what you're talking about, fix, you know, fifty thousand in materials and having our people going and doing the work, instead of hiring a contractor for everything. So I think that is something, I think it's a good, it's a good, uh, good point, good suggestion, and I think we should follow up on it.
Uh, I, I would strongly encourage you to, um, and I'd like to see the data on what we've been able to accomplish. And then if we applied that matrix to, to the other building, how many years would it take us? Cause I think we could have a better conversation from council to the administration.
Right.
Um, I, I think while you say you're not resistant, it's sort of like no one pulls the trigger. And so, it took us three years to pull the trigger on the maintenance teams. I don't wanna have a conversation for three years. I think, I think it's just more cost-effective, um, if we start planning it out. So if you can apply that matrix to public property, and we can have a conversation before the end of the budget cycle, I'd like to see some of that done, because I agree with my council colleagues. Um, I think that visually, neighborhoods, um, feel like we have abandoned them, and when our public facilities look like that, it, it just adds to, to the feeling that we're not doing a good job, let alone the morale that exists in those firehouses and, um, and, and the police, uh, department. So I think we need to be more aggressive. I think we have a little bit of room and now a little bit of experience.
Mm-hmm.
I personally hate the fact that we are held hostage by some of these external contractors who do this work. You know, I'm just extremely frustrated. Um, and I think that the competition has to come from us, to say, we can do this ourselves, and we can hire these folks to do this work better, um, than what we've been getting. We're not getting a good product for what we're paying for, um, on the capital side. And so, and we know that, and everybody knows that. And so, we really need to move on this stuff. And I just don't want it, it to take three years to build up a maintenance team in the, in the city. I think, I think we need to pull the trigger on it.
Okay, I think we should definitely have the discussion sooner rather than later.
So hopefully by the end of the budget, we'll get the matrix of roof, heating, all of those things?
Yes, we'll, um, produce some thoughtful analysis to move it forward, uh, move the discussion forward, definitely.
Thank you, I know I've finished up my time.
Yes, you did. Uh-huh, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, for the people who have not spoken in the first round, it will go to, uh, Councilman O, and then Councilman Scola, if he's still here, and then we'll begin the second round. Councilman O?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good morning.
Good morning, Councilman.
Um, in the capital budget, have you included any, um, anticipated, uh, funds from the outstanding, uh, five hundred million dollars in delinquent taxes being collected?
So the, any of the outstanding taxes being collected would be shown in the operating budget?
I did not see it in the operating budget.
Well, in the operating budget, um, it shows up in lines titled "prior tax collection." So there's current, and then there's prior. Uh, so that's where it would show in the budget and brief document.
So, could you refresh my recollection? Um, did you put a number, uh, for this year in the operating budget in terms of the money that you anticipated to collect from the outstanding five hundred-plus million dollars of delinquent taxes and fees?
Well, I'm not, I can't verify the five hundred million number that you're using, but we do have a number budgeted each year for, uh, prior-year collections.
So, based on the hearing we had yesterday with, uh, Commissioner Tolson, uh, there was five hundred thirty-three million dollars in outstanding uncollected delinquent taxes and fees for, uh, real estate-related, and eighteen point eight million was collected, leaving five, five hundred fourteen point two million dollars still outstanding.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, do you have with you, or, or does someone have the number that you anticipate to collect each year off of this outstanding debt?
Yes, I have the number, um, what we have anticipated for the prior-year collections in real estate. I'm just thinking that it might be better, I mean, I could definitely provide that to you, and it might be a better discussion to have once the operating budget hearing start this coming Monday, um, because we're talking about capital, but I can go, go through it if you would like.
Well, it helps me with, um, understanding capital, um, you know, kinda collectively. Uh, so I'm not gonna spend too much time on this-
Okay.
...because, you know, basically, what I'm looking at, based on the information received yesterday, is this debt, some of it being a couple of decades old, uh, needs to be collected as quickly as possible.
Mm-hmm.
And when we add in the income, the uncollected income taxes that, that become uncollectible after six years, that if these aren't reduced to judgment and collected upon, we're probably not gonna collect them. And it, it does seem possible that one hundred fifty-three million is collectible over a period of years. So I'm anticipating to look at the budget somewhere, uh, whether it's capital or operating, and see a number that is consistent with collecting- and see a number that is consistent with collecting this debt, the collectible portion over the anticipated amount of time, four years, five years, that I would hope would be added to the budget in terms of paying for some of the things that we're talking about.
So in the operating budget, and I can show you the page, and it's in the budget and brief document, we have about $44 to $45, $46 million a year in prior-year tax for property tax alone. That doesn't account for wage and business and other taxes. So, and this is just the city's portion of those taxes. There's also the school district's portion of those taxes.
Okay.
But again, it might make sense either, I'd be happy to discuss with you outside this hearing or at one of the operating budget hearings.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for answering my question.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Councilman. The last person in our first round of questioning is Councilman Skriller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning.
Good morning.
My, my question sort of was on the lines of the council president's questions with the commercial corridor monies. We did think, I think originally there would be the $5 million a year into that fund, but that money moving forward, obviously since there was only a million dollars added to that, is there a process if we could go over of what actual projects can be done on those commercial corridors?
Sure. Well, again, and I would restate what I said to the council president, that we're definitely open for discussion for increasing that. That's just, we lowered several items just to try to get the debt issuance numbers down in the out-years, but we're open to increasing that back. So that's not a controversial point from our perspective.
That's good.
Right? We have one.
Not used to that.
Okay. In terms of the process by which the projects are picked and what's eligible, I would call up Karen Pegel to go through that.
We could, we could work with her on that.
Okay.
Yeah, to explain that.
Okay, great.
Well, last year when we spoke, we had, there was an increase in capital funding for public property for repairs and maintenance, and I think it was to understand that if we did some preventive maintenance and be able to fix things, we could then end up saving money in the long run, not having to redo it. Do we have any, I guess, information on what that money was actually spent on and what do we think the improvements, how that actually saved?
We do, actually, and Joe Palatino was up here a few minutes ago, talked, Deputy Public Property Commissioner, speaking on that. They've made over, I believe, 1,600 repairs at police fire stations. When I say repairs, preventative maintenance work orders, police fire stations and other city buildings, and they are estimating capital savings from that investment. So we do have some data, and we could forward that along to you if you want the actual list of stations that they've been to.
And the reason why I'm asking that too, because we had mentioned last year also that once we did it this year, that next year we would probably add that to Parks and Rec to do that. And is that something that we're going to do to increase some capital dollars for the repairs and save money that way also?
That's a good question. I mean, I think that the way Parks and Rec had, did get additional money last year in their budget, over $2 million, and they've allocated a good amount of that to additional staff, and they're working on maintenance as well as small capital projects. So that is something that, that they're doing and will continue to look at.
All right, that wasn't my question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
My, it was that last year we talked about adding the additional capital that would be ongoing yearly for public property so that we could do all these repairs ahead of time and preventive maintenance stuff.
Right.
And this year we were going to start adding it to Parks and Rec, so can we?
Into their, it's an operating budget item, so into their operating budget?
Yes.
I think in the meantime, and we can continue this discussion offline, because I think in the meantime that Parks and Rec did get funding, but we can, we can continue this discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my answer. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Kinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I mean, every time we're talking about finite amount of dollars to spend on capital needs, it's all a matter of setting priorities. And ironically, as I'm looking at these $10,000 items for ramp sidewalks and paving at firehouses, I add up $8 million in proposed expenditures for Penn's Landing. Now, I think Penn's Landing's great, and I know there's long-term plans for it to actually be torn down and paved over and covered over with a grass park, but we have $8 million in planned improvements and maintenance to Penn's Landing and $3-point-something million in firehouses. I mean, isn't it a matter of setting your priorities? And the priorities you've set are basically that Penn's Landing's more important than our fire station.
No, I wouldn't draw that conclusion. And I did say that we also have $8 million of prior-year funds that's still available for fire stations, plus the $3 million in new money. The $8 million in Penn's Landing is a significant one-time investment or increase in that funding from past years and for future years. It will not be, it is not expected to be that high. But to your point, I mean, I think every item in the capital budget was thought through in terms of, you know, we give a certain, try to give a certain amount for upkeep and repairs to our existing facilities, and also try to be forward-thinking with some economic development issues.
It was thought through by whom?
The capital budget?
Yeah.
Was thought through by me, was thought through up to the mayor.
Okay. I mean, do you think that the council has a role?
This is, council does have a role, yes.
Well, but it's already been thought through.
I'm sorry?
It's already been thought through. So it's like, you know, here, here it is. But they have, we have a public property committee that's ably chaired by Councilman Heenan. There's no interaction between the administration and council on any large issue, including the capital budget. Why is that the case? I mean, as I've said before in this relative, this issue relative to PGW, I can't imagine a private sector firm having a CEO make a $2 billion asset sale request and never talk to the board of directors. I can't imagine a private sector firm that has a board of directors, that has various committees, that have purview over certain areas, and have no interaction with the CEO and his staff prior to coming here with this. And I just don't understand why that doesn't happen.
I'm not clear on the board of directors comparison.
This is a municipal corporation.
Well, this is actually, we-
We have a CEO, let me finish, I'll explain to you what, this is a municipal corporation that has a CEO. It also has a 17-member board of directors. Each of those board of director members chair a committee that have something to do with the operation of that municipal corporation. Why does not the CEO and his staff talk to the members of the board? Because if it was a private sector firm, that would never happen.
I think it's different.
Why is it different?
I think that we work with council on many issues throughout the year, but government has an executive branch.
Right.
And that is separate. It's not a board of directors.
It's a $4 billion municipal corporation, what's the difference?
There's a-
It's got stockholders who are citizens, it has-
I agree with that.
Members of the board who are actually elected, not appointed, and most of the people who are making the decisions relative to the big-ticket items across the board are appointed, not elected.
But the CEO reports to the board of directors.
When?
The CEO often, anyway, I don't think we need to get into a back-and-forth.
I must have missed those board-
No, in a company, is what I'm saying. In a corporation, the CEO reports to a board of directors. That's not the case here. We're a separate branch of government.
I sit on a board of a big company, and when we make big decisions, we're vetted, they vet the decisions with the board every step of the way. So when a vote's taken, I feel very confident when I make my vote that I know what I'm talking about. This disconnecting government, to me, is not productive. Because if you walked along with us the entire step of the way, when we came to make a final decision or a vote for something, we'd all feel we're in a good place, as opposed to trying to push and pull and maneuver.
I think that is the purpose in government, though, of the hearings, that the executive branch is supposed to propose a budget, and then we go through these hearings and discussions, and that's, and that final outcome could be different than what's proposed.
What stops the CEO of this municipal corporation from interacting with his board of directors?
We interact all the time. But I don't, I don't feel like this is necessarily productive at this point. Sorry?
I'm just, we're having, we have these ongoing discussions about how we allocate resources that are scarce, and it's, it seems to be more adversarial all the time as opposed to cooperative and attempt to get along. But you disagree. You think, you think we're informed about everything.
I, I think there's, I don't think you're informed about everything. I think that there's, I'm sure, room for improvement.
Okay.
I try to work with council members.
I appreciate your efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. I think in the spirit of true cooperation between board of directors and the CEO, I want to cite for a hot second of my time, some of the positive things we've done together. We've worked on commercial corridors together where we were able to synergize our resources in the water department, Fairmount Park, Streets, to do something very nice on some of the commercial corridors, and we are truly appreciative of those capital inputs and cooperation.
Thank you.
So I want to say that in full disclosure. We have done a lot of good work with the water department to do projects that are in the 4th district that have improved the quality of life there. So I don't want to give the impression that we never cooperate, because we do. It's the times that you hear about when we kind of miss cue that is the anomaly as opposed to the majority of the times. Couple of quick questions, and just if I'm right, tell me, and then I'll get to my question. We've raised, over the total debt that we've borrowed, both obligation bonds and revenue bonds, about $1.2 billion?
The $1.3 billion is just the general, or $1.2 billion is just the general obligation bonds.
Right, all right.
Yeah.
Out of that, we pay about a half a billion in interest over the timeframe of the borrowing by way of interest payments, according to your numbers?
Sorry, what?
About a half a billion of that is repayment of interest.
Well, well, I'm not sure what you're looking at. The sinking fund budget which pays the debt service is about $220-some million a year.
Over a year?
Mm-hmm, which is principal and interest.
I was talking about the general obligation bonds over the period.
Oh, okay.
That's about, so out of the $1.2, we pay back about $800.
I see what you're saying. You're saying, right, the total interest over time, okay.
Right. So our debt ceiling cannot be legally above 3.5% of our total ability to raise money, which is the taxable real estate that we've valued at AVI, which is about $98 billion?
Right, the 10-year average of assessed value, right.
So with AVI coming onboard, what will be our borrowing ability next year?
Well, actually, the borrowing ability, the increased borrowing ability went into effect for this budget year.
So how much is it?
This fiscal 15. The debt ceiling is now one point, the available debt, the debt ceiling is $3 billion. The legal debt margin, the amount of room under the debt ceiling is now $1.4 billion.
And so decisions will be made, will, do we ever go up to the legal limit and are we planning to?
Well, we used to always, as you know, be upright against the legal debt limit, and it used to be a constraining factor in our capital budgets and our borrowing. Now that AVI has gone into effect, the constitutional debt limit is no longer the constraining factor on our budget. The constraining factor is really payment of the principal and interest payments in our operating budget. So the more debt we take on, the bigger percentage of our operating budget becomes fixed costs on the principal and interest payment, and that's what constrains us, as well as the rating agencies who don't like it.
The answer to the question, are we going to borrow up to our limit, is?
No.
Okay, all right. So there'll be less projects that we look at based on our ability to borrow?
That's right. So even though the debt limit, and thank you for that clarification, even though the debt limit is going up dramatically, our amount that we issue will not go up dramatically.
Let me quickly shift gears to the Germantown, the old Germantown Veterans Memorial Army Reserve Center located at 5200 Wissahican Avenue, which was, according to BRAC, ordered to close. We originally had plans for the Department of Public Property to make that a police facility. That was shifted to the northeast, as I understand it, and my question now becomes, it's an 1,100-square-foot parcel in my district, what, 11,000-square-foot parcel in my district, what are we going to do with?
Um, that is a good question.
I tried to answer.
I might call Gary Nappett from property up here to discuss that. I think, though, that there was an issue of the amount of money that was, the Woodhaven Base Fairlinemen Enclosure building started first and ended up being much more expensive than anticipated.
See, those are the kinds of decisions that councilperson and the board of directors and the CEO should kind of do together in a process.
I agree we should do it together. The board of directors analogy I don't really love, but I agree that we should do it together.
All right.
Good seeing you, sir.
Good seeing you as well.
I wish I had a better answer. We had originally anticipated doing both of those facilities. Numbers fluctuated on Woodhaven, of course, that's a bigger facility, and that was going to house the police academy. So I think when 4601 came into the picture and that kind of expanded, a lot of things were happening with police. The project that probably fell off the table was the Wissahican BRAC project. I'm sure we're going to have to put some thought into what happened.
See, I'm not mad at you. I don't want to give you the impression. I want to work with you.
Yeah.
Because that's a hot neighborhood.
Right.
And it has upside potential. But my, your sphere of influence may be governmental. Mine may be both governmental and private sector developers that might want to look at it. And I don't have one in mind, but if I don't know what the inventory of available opportunities is in my district, I can't help you market it. So that's why this kind of cooperation is essential for economic development or government development or job creation of some other type.
Certainly.
I think it would be great to actually have a meeting and include, with your office, on that topic.
Right. But I, and the salt mounds, which are, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to, but those, that's, that's not, that's not the kind of cooperation. See, because if I share a vision with you and then you tell me, ah, that, you're out of your mind, which people tell me from time to time, then I can accept that. But if you don't hear what the vision is, then, you know, we wind up with closed facilities that could, may have had a repurpose or another life based on information I have. That's what I'm trying to underscore and emphasize today, all right?
Understood.
Certainly take your point.
I mean, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
Can we talk about cameras?
Sure.
A little bit further.
Sure.
And I'm wondering if we have a list of what rec centers, facilities, as you know, we're trying to make sure that every playground or recreation center has a camera system within the next three years. Can you give me an idea of what has been done to date?
Yes.
What rec centers and playgrounds already have?
I can, and I'll also call up Mike DiBardinos or someone from Parks and Rec on that. I'm looking for my list, apologies. Yes, I do have the list of the year one for video surveillance sites, but I'll wait for Mike.
Mike DiBardinos, deputy mayor, commissioner of Parks and Recreation. Okay. And the question, Councilwoman, sorry.
Good morning. If you could give us an idea of, you know, what's been done in terms of cameras in our Parks and Recreation Centers?
Well, right now, we have 572 cameras in 49 sites. We have, and then on top of that with your, the program you spearheaded, and each district councilman is providing capital dollars, we have a schedule that we're on, and we are working with each council, councilmatic district, and where the two or three cameras in the major facilities are going in on an annual basis. So that would be 30, approximately 30 facilities a year for the next three years. So, and that's moving along, and we have that on a really good timetable, and we expect to, the mark we set with you earlier, and we've worked with all the district council people, we expect to move that and hit our marks in terms of annually installing 30 additional, more or less, 30 additional cameras for the next three years. And then given what we have in, already in place, and those added cameras in three years- And then given what we have in, already in place, and those added cameras in three years, every facility, playground will have, and rec center will have, security cameras.
Okay, great. And also, can you detail and talk a little bit about the, sort of, the deterrent, you know, mosquito repellent?
Yeah, this thing, this mosquito thing mystifies me, but it works. It's, not all the centers, but many of them will have the, this high-frequency sound that goes on after the facility's closed at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, 10:00 o'clock, and it, apparently, young people, younger people, it's highly sensitive to them and tends to keep them out of the places they shouldn't be at 10:00, 11:00, 12:00, 1, 2 in the morning.
Supposedly, they can hear that frequency.
Yeah, we can't. Guys like me can't hear them. Folks, sorry, but the young folks.
Supposedly, the young people can hear it, and it's a bother, it's a bothersome noise and adults can't hear it.
And just like the cat.
Councilman Squillill said he's young enough to hear.
Yeah, I hear Squillill can hear, yeah, Squillill gets really crazy when he gets near them. But, but, all fun aside, there are a couple of places where there have been installed, and our experience tells us that it works.
Okay. Can you tell, give us an idea of where it's been installed so far?
Pardon?
Where has it been installed so far? Has it also been installed in conjunction with the cameras that?
They will be, yes. This program has, I don't think at all the facilities, somebody might correct me if I'm wrong from my staff, but at selected facilities that will receive cameras, the high, you know, this mosquito system will be installed as well. I can get you sort of, at least either the raw number or the centers or playgrounds where that system will be installed in conjunction with the cameras.
Okay, great. And, okay, and so, so you'll get us that information?
Yeah.
Okay, and, you know, on another note, I did want to thank you for all of your hard work and also recognize Seuss Lawson, who's just been a real gem to work with, and you guys do a great job.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate each district councilperson working, you know, with the department to, we have this mandate from not only our staff, but from our citizen support organizations, SAFE, Clean and Ready to Use, and we're doing our best to hit each one of them. That came through the merger process, and this initiative from council is going to help us get to SAFE in some pretty short order.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Commissioner?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor. Real quick, since it appears that the sound initiative is working, can you get, is it possible to see if there can be a miniaturized version? Because I'm sure a couple of people here might want to have one installed in their man cave on Sunday, so it's kind of keep the kids out as we do the football thing.
We're going to look right into that, yeah.
You know what I mean? I think Councilwoman Tascow has a question.
About the lights at the rec centers being shut off at a certain time.
Okay.
That, that.
Okay. Well, not all the lights are being shut off. We are very serious about cutting down our energy use. We have hundreds and hundreds of lit ball fields. So we have instituted a program that during the winter, right, that field lights, not court lights or vandal lights, just field lights, would be turned off for the winter cold weather months when there's no permitted evening play on our fields. That is saving us, I can have the numbers, I don't have them with me, but we are saving substantial energy, money on conserving energy. For every dollar we save, 50 cents goes to the general fund, and 50 cents goes back to the department to improve services and to continue to build the ability to conserve energy. So just to be clear, not court lights, not vandal lights, only the lights on our ball field. And I'll tell you, when I drive down 95 or I go up, come into my neighborhood, it's, you know, 12:00 at night, and I see field lights on, it used to, it killed me, but now we are, we are close to 100% compliance. Now, to your concern, Councilwoman, if there's a safety concern, right, and we will, and I'm not, want to be overzealous on this, and not consider neighborhood safety concerns that may grow out of this program. And we would be happy to look at remedies or some portion of those lights being turned on if there are, you know, safety issues that come out from your constituents or from the neighborhoods that are affected.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. DiBardinas, hold on one second, Councilman Johnson, I have a point of information.
One point of information? It's not working, but one point of information. Commissioner, yeah, I wanted to follow up to see how are you going about doing assessments of the various parks and ball fields throughout the city of Philadelphia when taking into consideration the public safety? Because we've already had complaints on a couple of different parks regarding when the lights are turned out. There are other lights that aren't working, and so it's told, like Donald P. Finnegan, not Donald P. Finnegan, Finnegan in southwest, just to be an example. There's one park where the lights are out at night, that's one of those areas, east west, whole bunch of trees, breezeways, totally dark. So how are you going about doing assessments of the areas?
Well, so I think what I'd like to do is where we become aware, and I have not gotten much back to me and to my shop, it's not to say there's not concerns, and apparently there are. So my response is we will bend and adapt to the safety concerns of residents in those neighborhoods and see if we can find where we can really save taxpayers' money, support the general fund, support the operation of the department, at the same time maintain a level of sort of safety that folks feel like we're listening to them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Great, thank you.
Just before you leave, you did say 500 cameras at rec centers?
Well, right now, let me look at that number. We have five, over, yeah, over 500 already, individual cameras already installed in our system.
Externally and internally?
Yep, inside and outside, yep.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to talk about cameras again, see if I can come back. Security cameras, so you may want to have your people come up.
Yeah, I'll have Adele, I'll be.
And before I get into this line of questioning, I just want to say how much I appreciate, one, the great work that Councilwoman Bass, working with the Recreation Department and Deputy Mayor DiBardinas, on the safety initiatives around the recreation centers, actually probably want to feed a little bit into my questions about the overall camera program. And I obviously want to thank the police for the great job that they've done, particularly over the last years, bringing down the homicide rate, a very, very difficult thing to do. But saying all of that, getting back to the conversation that we've had over the last several years about a more robust program as it relates to cameras, I'll give you a little time to think about it. Can you tell me how many cameras or the incremental increase of cameras that we've done over the last five years?
I don't have the numbers over the last five years, but I could certainly get the number.
That's kind of why I came back to you, I was hoping.
Yeah, no.
I was thinking that you were going to get on the phone and call the department and say, Clark's coming at you with this camera stuff.
I did. I did, I, obviously, my question was different.
So you don't know?
My question to my staff was, how many cameras do we have enrolled in Safe Cam? How many cameras do we have access to? And how many cameras are deployed in a percentage of uptime? So if you're interested in those numbers, I'm happy to share those numbers.
Let me, let me cut to the chase.
Sure.
We've been talking about this camera issue for a while, and you may not have been here, it may have been somebody that preceded you. And we talked about an aggressive approach, members here, we actually went to Baltimore to look at their security camera surveillance program down in Baltimore, and we were pretty excited about what we saw. And in conversation with the administration, we were led to believe that was going to be a very aggressive ramp up in terms of the deployment of cameras in the city of Philadelphia. And today, I thought I heard you say that you have 219 cameras currently. And I'm trying to understand, if we only have 219, where were we three, four years ago if there was an incremental increase in camera placement? And the fact that we're only at 219 when in Baltimore, there are 600 cameras, in Baltimore a city 30% the size of this city, Chicago, little larger city, but 1,500 cameras, and in Manhattan alone, 2,500 cameras, and I'm just trying to get a sense of, and then let me throw in the Department of Recreation, 500 cameras in the department, and I assume probably half of them may be internally. What are we doing? I mean, if we made a decision that we don't need cameras because we had a drop in homicide rates, we say, you know what, we don't need cameras, or is there some funding issue, is it a technology issue? I mean, I really don't understand what.
Could I clarify process for a minute?
People say we're not going to do it, just say, say, we're not going to do it.
I mean, I'm, I'm. It's not my decision, but, so, let me just clarify process for a minute. So as a technology organization, we provide IT support for the maintenance of the cameras, the installations of the cameras, the day-to-day care and feed of the cameras, connectivity to the cameras, and a behind-the-scenes sort of video monitoring solution. So what we've been very aggressive about over the last 12 to 18 months is making sure that we've increased the uptime from a, it was a very low number prior to us focusing on the cameras, to now we're, again, close to 92% of uptime, or at least access to those cameras. We've also changed the video monitoring behind the scene to a very old legacy technology called Timesight, to now a much more robust video monitoring solution called Genetek. It's also deployed at the DIVIC, the Fusion Center. So our role is in support, to support that infrastructure. There's a very close collaboration with the police department. The police department, down to the district captains, they decide where the new cameras go, they decide the priority order of what cameras we work on next. We get that schedule from them, frankly, and that's what we respond to. We don't have input into where cameras should go next, or what cameras we should respond to next, so it's a very close collaboration with the police department.
So what you're saying is that somebody else should be at the table answering these questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy, if somebody, somebody else wants to come up and fill in that.
And I'm okay with that. Actually, I believe that you were called to the table earlier when I asked about cameras, about the administration, so if there's somebody can give me a better understanding of the process as it relates to the willingness or the capabilities of expanding the surveillance camera program, I'm more than happy to entertain that person at the table, witness table today.
Morning.
Good afternoon, Deputy.
Deputy Commissioner William Blackburn.
Good afternoon.
I agree with you, cameras are an excellent tool for investigations. In the past, we would go out looking for neighborhood surveys, homicide detectives as well as detectives from divisions go out and look for cameras, and are an excellent tool in solving crime, and I think they are one of the contributing factors to the great clearance rate we had this past year. I believe there's 225 city cameras that are available at our DIVIC center that are being monitored. There is a high degree of, in the 80 or 90% that are currently working. But also in the DIVIC center, the officers assigned there have the capabilities of monitoring over 1,000 cameras, and those cameras are from SEPT, the Department of Transportation.
Real-time?
At, at the DIVIC center.
I'm saying real-time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And are the bulk of those at SEPT?
They're not our, the bulk of them are SEPT cameras.
SEPT, alright.
Yes, sir, as well as Department of Transportation. They are, they are being monitored as we speak. There is a 24/7 operation down at that.
And those SEPT cameras tend to be at train stations?
Yes.
Basically, so the other world, which is the majority of the world, the corridors, the streets where I live, where other members live, everybody lives, there are basically no cameras.
Right, right. I believe the, the camera issue is also a funding issue, and he is correct in terms of there is input from the divisional captains, inspectors, as well as the executive staff as to where those cameras should be placed based on accurate crime data. And that's how we decide where they're going to be placed. Funding, I believe there's some connectivity issues as well that would really determine where these cameras could be put. I don't know if they could be put everywhere in the city in terms of the connectivity.
Right. Okay, and I understand that when I ask myself and other members ask certain questions, there are ways to answer them that fall within the structure of the government, but you did say one key word, which I was trying to get at earlier, funding. And we were led to believe, which is actually one of my questions about the funding initiative for additional cameras, and I'm just, and unfortunately, I'll probably have to wait until Mr. Gillikson comes here, because that, where the conversation was, the last budget message about the ability to ramp up our camera program, because while I, I agree with you, and you don't need me to do that because you're the professional, but the ability to investigate crimes that were committed are enhanced significantly by having the availability of cameras, both public and private, but this whole issue respects the deterrence, because I'm sure you, like everybody else, would prefer that we don't have the crime, because people know that there is a real-time surveillance program going on, such as what happened in SEPT recently, when people actually saw something happening and the police were able to deploy, and I commend SEPT, my friends from SEPT in the back, that they do it right. And so I guess my issue is, at some point, and we obviously are not going to resolve that here today in this room, there needs to be a real conversation about having an aggressive program and not being a city of 1.5 million, right, and only having 200 cameras in the city of Baltimore, having 600 cameras, and it was kind of embarrassing then when we went to Baltimore three years ago, and it's still embarrassing, that hopefully we can, and you'll be an integral part of that conversation, that we can really talk about what we can do as the, I don't know how we should characterize ourselves, I'm Board of Directors or co-managers or whatever we are, you know, we are the entity that appropriates funds for whatever we do in the city of Philadelphia. So based on early conversation with our colleagues, my colleagues, it's clear that that's something that we're interested in.
Yes, sir, and I also agree with council's support in terms of the cameras location as well as community input. They're both two key elements that should be included.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about that camera that I asked for about three years ago, and I'm still waiting, but since you mentioned it, council's involved, and I'll leave it at that. Deputy, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Council, you got yours, Councilman, and you probably have a little different relationship than I do with. Councilman Jones?
Thank you. Yes, I have a little different relationship. I've been down to the DIVIC Center, Real-Time Crime Center, and actually, Councilman Johnson and Councilman Greenlee, and I believe Councilman Bass are going to take a ride down there because of our trip, and would love to have our president with us, and it's, it's pretty, pretty interesting what the grant has done to do that, but where, I think your point is that it hasn't filtered into neighborhoods, corners, hot, it hasn't, it's covering our ports, our stadiums and stuff like that, but we have to make the transition into high crime areas that we all have in our districts, and I think that transition we need to work a little better on. But I, I think it, when I, when I went to Baltimore, the president sent us all down there on a field trip. That was the last field trip you sent us on, by the way. I know we don't, we can't afford those kind of things, but it was so informative, we learned so much and brought it back to our respective district. I just look forward to you taking us somewhere again.
We're working on one, Council.
Alright, thank you, sir.
We, we need to get out of this building more.
I'm trying to tell you.
I'm sure some people on the second floor would wish we would leave here more frequently also.
Yes, sir. That was funny, huh? So I want to say. So I want to segue to the fire department, like some of my colleagues have had. In my district, Engine 66, located at Ridge Avenue in Shawmont, has been closed for four months. And I wanted to get a sense of why and why it takes so long for some critical infrastructure like a firehouse to be totally shut down and find out when we were going to have some resolution on that.
Okay. If it's, is Engine 66, it was shut down due to an issue there?
There was a gas odor or something that was to be discovered.
Right.
And the problem is, in that particular part of my district, it obviously has physical challenges because of the hills, because of the small streets, because of inclement weather, freeze-overs, that that critical station at that location is like, it's not like a flat area. So because it's closed, it's being covered by other departments, and I just need to sense, when is it going to be reopened? And why was it closed so long?
Okay. I'll have this...
Good morning.
Deputy Commissioner Costa, Technical Services. The issue with Engine 66, just to give you a little bit of background, one of our fire lieutenants became ill in the station. And there was some concern, they were smelling some sort of fumes in the station. So we had our hazmat unit and others, EPA, there's a whole series of partners that are collaborating with us on that. And there were, found some levels of materials there that they assure us, EPA and others, and after frequent survey, ongoing survey, is not of concern, but they couldn't give us the cause of it. There are three gas stations in that area, and that we're still thinking that that's possible, one of the sources. The reason we closed the station, we share your concern for the local, obviously we want to have that fire station in service, but we also have the concern for the health and welfare of our members.
Absolutely.
And that's why it's been closed as long as it has been. They, again, have assured us that the levels that they found of a list of chemicals that they can provide later, they are below thresholds that would be a threat to anyone in that station. But we, the administration, are not comfortable putting people back in that station until we know what the source is.
So how long?
In the meantime, in the meantime, we've done continuous monitoring at my insistence as well as others in the administration. EPA has worked very hard with us, but they'd like to get out of, get out of that business of being part of this. But we've monitored the station on several times. The levels are still low. We're in the process of working with public property now to put in a series of mitigations despite the fact that we feel that those lowers, the levels are that low. But we want all of our members and us to be comfortable putting people back in there. So now the process is, where we are is putting the mitigation in, which you talked about earlier, mentioned 200-some steps or whatever. Well, that starts to become part of this before we can actually get the bids put out and before we have the contractors come in and put in the mitigation, which will involve sealing any of the openings. There's one particular area where it seems to be entering the station where there's utility lines coming in. Sealing that up and then also putting in mechanical, electrical ventilation to remove those fumes from that area. And then, once that's done, I'm insisting that it be retested to make sure that those mitigation efforts are effective. So yeah, it's uncomfortably long doing what we're doing, but I would be even less comfortable putting our people back in there until we're absolutely certain that it's safe to do so. And the other issue regarding, again, I wish we had that station open, but we've moved Engine 66. They're not out of service and are only 1.1 miles away from down Ridge Avenue further, running out of the station area that the engine company was deactivated several years ago. So they're in, in the area, I would prefer they be, and the commissioner would prefer, that they be at Engine 66, but that preference is superseded by the concern for the members. And we're working with EPA, air management, water department, I mean, there's so many partners that are part of this, trying to get to this source, determine the source, and then parallel pass to put the mitigation into effect.
Well, we share this concern for the members of the fire department and rank and file, in particular, that risk their lives every day. I share the environmental concern about making sure that the work area that they do their service for all of us is a safe environmental service. But taking our time to get those remediations done, not that I'm saying you're doing it, but since December, they've been closed. And although you say that it's being covered by a station 1.9...
1.1 miles away.
1.1 miles away. If we hold our breath for those seconds and differences, if you, you know, that can be an eternity.
Count.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
Because I listen to you. So I want those processes expedited, because I have a procurement background. I used to work, you can do a thing called an emergency order and circumvent some of those 250 steps. In the case of first responders dealing with an area as traverse as Roxboro, I'm asking that we do everything we can to open those stations back up. We don't want to wait until a tragedy and someone cites the fact that it took a little longer to get there or they couldn't get there because they weren't familiar with that particular section of town. So all I'm asking is that it's been a quarter of a year and that it shouldn't take another quarter of a year for something so vital as a fire station to be put back online. I will ask a different question during the operating budget about the brownouts and the difference of about $3 million it takes to not have brownouts. And that since we have resolved the labor issues, that maybe there's a way to resolve that funding gap to keep those brownouts from closing our firehouses. That's a story for a different day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Fiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we look at this capital development piece, one of the things that we found is that colocation can happen. Obviously, we did a colocation in my district. When we look at potentially replacing some of these facilities, is there any thought being given to the colocation possibilities with firehouses, rec centers, or other things? Is anybody working on anything like that? The ability for buildings that we know...
Right. What you're really talking about is then replacing, right? Replacing existing facilities with co-located facilities. We are doing that down in South Philly with Health Center 2, with a new rec center and library, as well as the Health Center altogether, which is largely being funded by CHOP with the help of donor. I think that, other than that, it's a very good practice. It requires the expense of building new facilities. I think that's all, at this point, that I can say, I mean, it's a very good question. I don't know if, Gary, you can, from a city planning perspective, you've looked at that?
That, that actually is one of the, one of the major principles in the Philadelphia 2035 Comprehensive Plan, that where opportunities present themselves, we look at the colocation of facilities in a way that can also support and reinforce neighborhood reinvestment and other development, you know, perhaps even as town centers going forward. A lengthy process, obviously. You know, as we complete our district plans as part of the Comprehensive Plan, we are looking at those opportunities. So about a year ago, the City Planning Commission adopted the Central District Plan. One of, two of the police stations in that area, the 6th and 9th Districts, were, were considered for a colocation. And that, there is some funding in the out years of the, of the capital program to do that. We're continuing to look at other options for, for that. One of the goals, of course, is to get the city out of leased space. So 6th and 9th is, is one. I know that we have talked about the 39th District, although I don't think that's a colocation facility, but we'd look at that opportunity. And in lower north Philadelphia, I think it's the 22nd District, looking at the possibility of a, of a new station there that might co-locate with, with a fire station. So we're, we're trying to tackle those opportunities as we do, you know, as we go district by district in our, in our planning. And of course, we're, we're also working with the, with the operating departments, you know, where they can perceive achieving real economies, renewing their facilities into more world-class facilities and achieve economies in their operating budgets with that, with that kind of approach. We're certainly interested in talking, talking to them and entertaining those ideas.
One of the challenges is that you kind of sometimes have to force the conversations because everybody's thinking about their department. Are there any opportunities with some of these school closures to look at these buildings and say, hey, can we, particularly in areas where a vacant building could be potentially dangerous, that we can create those colocation opportunities? And there has to be someone charged with that. I mean, I'm glad for the 6th and 9th, I'm glad for what we did, but two in a plan when we're planning out to 2035 is not a whole lot. I mean, I think there's some facilities that if we said, we're just going to trash it, I think Councilman Heenan and I hate the 15th Police District. I don't know who hates it more, you or I? You do. We, unless we have, someone is in charge of providing that, then what we're going to have is every department looking at its solution and not a neighborhood solution. So someone has to be put in charge of that. Because I'd love to get rid of that building. And I know for the councilman and I, it's sort of like, what is a potential colocation if we knew what other departments were thinking and their needs were? You know, and really, I'm thinking outside the box in terms of Streets Department and others. Where do we have space that we may want to put these facilities in?
Yeah, no, it's, I think it's a good idea and, you know, we're certainly trying to consider that. I think through the deputy mayor's, Deputy Mayor for Economic Development's office, working, helping with, work with the school district in the disposition of, of some of those facilities, that, that's probably something that can be considered. I know that probably a decade ago now, when the Woodhaven Road and Whistaken Avenue Army Reserve facilities were being closed under the BRAC process, we, the City Planning Commission, as our involvement in trying to obtain those properties for the city of Philadelphia, all, you know, also gave consideration to the colocation of, of facilities, you know, in those existing buildings. And over time, I think some of the, the operational needs of departments may have changed slightly. So, but I think, you know, generally, conceptually, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a good idea. It's something that we should be doing, and we're actively looking to pursue those ideas.
Councilman Johnson, I think you wanted to, before you walked out.
Thank you, Council President. Just had a couple of questions. How you doing, Rebecca?
I'm good. How are you?
Doing pretty good. Just so everyone knows, even though Rebecca represents the administration, she also comes from the 2nd Councilmatic District.
That's right.
So...
He is my councilman.
I won't hold that against you.
Yeah.
You should be in the fifth.
Got your back. I ain't going to let this so much happen to my constituent.
Oh.
Even though she's speaking on behalf of the administration, so...
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just want to make sure you are...
So he has my back if anything happens.
So, a couple of questions. First and foremost, I do want to thank the administration for their support of the Philadelphia Art Museum, the three-point, the $3 million for funding for their master facilities plan. Although it's not in my district, I do recognize that it's a very critical part of our economy as well as our cultural art scene. And so they have various youth programs that reach out to the 2nd Councilmatic District and those, so I definitely want to acknowledge that. The $10.5 million that's going toward the Delaware School Kill River Front, School Kill River Waterfront, can you just break down in terms of the School Kill River Waterfront, what impact, does any of that impacts the 2nd Councilmatic District regarding the School Kill River Trail?
In terms of the actual improvements that will be made, I might ask Dwayne Bum from the Commerce Department to come up.
Dwayne Bum, Deputy Commerce Director and resident of the 2nd Councilmatic District as well.
Representing very well.
Thank you. I do a lot of my work in the fifth, however, but I do live in the second.
That's what the power is, okay.
So to your question, much of the School Kill Trail, which is sort of basically an extension of the work that's already been done from the Art Museum down to, close to the South Street Bridge at this point, the next phase is the boardwalk connection to the South Street Bridge, the connection then beyond that, all the way down around the, the, what was called the Dupont Crescent, but on the way to the Bartram, Bartram's Garden and the crossing there. The trail mostly sits on the east side of the river, therefore, it's within, it's all within the 2nd District. It does, at some point, jump over as it gets to Bartram Garden, and then at that point, it becomes part of the 3rd Councilmatic District. And the trail will be completed sort of in segments as opportunistically. So if we can have site control, we will do those segments of the trail. Ultimately, the master plan would be to, for all those segments, to connect into one contiguous trail. The section that's being undertaken right now is all within the 2nd District. The, the planning work that's being done, however, right now is for, the one new project is for that pedestrian bridge that will actually cross the river just south of the Grace Ferry Bridge. So I think that maybe that, at that point, it's actually linking, I'm not sure where the council district line is, but it's right there at the line.
All right. And do we have a representative here from the Streets Department?
We do. The Streets Commissioner is here.
Very well.
Just a question regarding, and it's been a problem, probably, probably would be more on the operational side than the capital side, but I want to still see how your department is supporting the Philadelphia Futures Program. Very, very successful throughout my district, the cleaning of alleyways with the replacement of the actual lights. And so in terms of this allocation, is this taking any, any consideration into that actual program? Because I would think the replacing of the lights would be a capital improvement, correct?
Yeah.
Or does it fall under the same category?
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Dave Perry, Streets Commissioner. The, the Future Track Program will continue to be a program that's supported by the Streets Department. We will continue to use that program to clean alleyways to allow us to complete the relamping of alley lights throughout the city. Now, the, the funding for the alley lights, I believe, was that a...
Yeah, the, there was, two years ago, money put in, capital money for replacement of the lamps and the lights. And I believe that that project is 79% completed at this point. So they're still working on that project.
Okay. And so pretty much after the project is completed, and that's based upon the assessment of all the lights throughout the city of Philadelphia?
That's right. There was a complete assessment done at that time of all the lights that were out and needed to be repaired and fixed. And then the program was built around that. So as this program reaches completion, I mean, it would, could make sense to have a discussion about it again.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
Good morning, Administration.
Good morning. Good afternoon, yes.
I read with interest your testimony, so I thank you for that. What I'm interested in hearing, however, is what three major developments or improvements have you made over the last year? And I'm reflecting... And I'm reflecting on the, some might argue dissatisfaction, others would say unhappiness, and some would say complaints that have been with this Department of Government from my first term. So hearing a number of legitimate concerns that were raised by district council members, what would you say are the improvements or developments or you've made over the last year, separate from what's in your testimony?
Sure. I would say there's a few different angles that we approached the issues surrounding the length of time it takes for projects to be completed, as well as some of the other issues that have been raised. We have done several things. There was the implementation of the Parks and Rec, Small Capital Projects Group, where additional funding was given to Parks and Rec to hire people to actually do the work of the small projects and rec centers through council districts throughout the city. There, we beefed up preventative maintenance, so to help out down the line, to prevent issues, boilers breaking, issues arising that become capital projects in the future. And I would say then, we made some changes, we continued to make changes to try to make improvements in the process. This cap, this year, we're adding a new quality assurance, quality control team of five people. And their job will be solely to manage projects to their timeline and make sure, check change orders. One thing that both FTI Consulting and the Capital Working Group, which UPS was a part, found was that we didn't have this team of people, and we should, is what they both said. Because we need people that are additional staffing to hold projects to timelines and to make sure that the change orders don't become a big part of the actual project, that the contractors aren't getting away with change orders unnecessarily. So that's another thing that, change we've made in this budget year. And we continue to make changes throughout, and we continue to do that. So just as Councilwoman Sanchez brought up the topic of what about having a similar team like Parks and Rec for police and fire stations? I mean, I think that's, that's a good idea. I think we should, from my perspective, we're continuing to try to improve the process.
And continuing to try to improve the process is based on what? Is it based on internal feedback from professionals? Is it based on external reports and recommendations? What drives that continuing to make progress?
Well, I would say that much of the improvements over the last year were due to both the FTI Consulting report as well as the Capital Working Group, which UPS was a part of and led their expertise to. And then, some of it is going to come from our own experience in some of the pilots that, or projects that we've started, such as preventative maintenance in public property and the success there, and the success on the Parks and Rec Small Capital Projects Team, that if it works in one place in the city government, it might work in another. So I think there's, we continue to look at various different sources for improvements to the process.
So the opposite side of that continuing, if you had to ID one, two, or three Achilles heels, some effort or internal practice, protocol that needs serious revamp, what would it be?
I would say that it still takes too long, to be quite frank. The capital projects still take too long, and that we need to look at that further, to figure out with the changes that we've made, why is it, why is the process not moving even faster? So, for example, from this year versus last year, we have less carry forward, so less, we have $290 million of previous year money. Last year, we had $304 million. So there's some improvement, but I think to your point, we just need to keep looking at it, and there's not an easy answer to the problem, unfortunately.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, for your indulgence. You're an endurance runner, so I'm not going to take too long to get through some of this.
Thank you, Council.
My question would be, on the issue of bridges, Councilman Johnson had hearings, I have to preside over those hearings in reference to the general condition of one bridge in his district in South Philly where there was a derailment. But the issue came up of all bridges in the city of Philadelphia, and I know that's a shared responsibility with CSX as well as SEPTA, as well as our responsibility. And I wanted to know, in the capital budget, is there an appropriation for the maintenance and repair or replacement of bridges?
There is money in the capital budget for bridges. There's, and for each dollar, we give up to a certain amount. It gets matched by the feds and the state, or one or the other.
And if you could give me the location and schedule of those repairs?
Okay. For that, I would call up, call back up the Streets Commissioner, Commissioner Perry for And there is also additional money coming down the line over the next year or two from the transportation bill that came, that was signed by the governor, that'll give, I believe it's about $16 million of additional funds to repair roads and bridges annually, starting next year in fiscal '16.
I'm very familiar with, in light of the potholes that we're experiencing, what's going to happen on the roads. I want to focus, of that $16 million possibly, what is going towards bridges that run through our communities? Councilwoman Blackwell was in that hearing and talked about electrical fences that were actually live, and people were being shocked doing those bridges, I mean, those fences. So I wanted to know, based on Councilman Johnson's concern about bridges, where we were going?
Bridge I was on when I toured, one of the areas in Southwest, I touched it, I didn't get shocked.
You didn't get shocked?
Other people may have.
That's because you have so much charisma that the current just ran through you rather.
Might be kind of cool, but that wasn't my, my experience. However, the passing of up to the state and the feds, I do think needs to be something that's addressed. And with our limited resources, maybe we float a bond or something in the future to look at. Separate from filling the potholes, how do we play some role in maintaining our bridges and roads, specifically the Schoolkill River Bridge, where the train derailed, as well as the 25th, the 25th and Washington, the Pass Junk Avenue, CSX Bridge. But it also come to my attention from Councilwoman Keona Sanchez, as well as Councilman Curtis Jones, that this is something that's taking place across the city of Philadelphia. And I'm even more, in terms of the point of information, inclined to make sure that, from a city standpoint, leadership-wise, that, you know, we engage those individuals on a federal level. And I don't have no problem saying their names, Revvis, Congressman Pata, Congressman Brady, U.S. Senator Bob Casey, U.S. Senator Toomey, to also play a role in this process as well, in supporting the city of Philadelphia. So, thank you.
I just want you to know, it's gotten to the point of serious that, and but for some of my colleagues trying to restrain me from doing it, that we want to do a class action suit to address it. It is a public safety matter that runs through every neighborhood in the city of Philadelphia. And when you tell me that's, not you, but when the federal folk tell me that falling chunks of concrete metal and spikes are just a part of maintenance, I take exception to that and want to know what we are doing to do our fair share by way of this budget to maintain those bridges.
Okay. Good afternoon, Councilman Dave Perry, Streets Commissioner. I'm interested in the bridge that had the electrification issue. I'm not aware that there was a bridge that had an electrical shortage problem, and I would like to, if you can pass that information on, I'd like to take a look at that. The proposed capital budget has several different pots of money available for bridge rehabilitation and bridge replacement. And what I'll do is I'll put together a list of the projects that we have upcoming and the schedule for when those repairs will be done. One of the interesting things that's in the budget is there's money under a line Act 13, which is money that the city receives through the, through the state government. It's money that was derived through the fracturing process.
How much is that?
It's $2.5 million. There's a bridge in North Philadelphia, Sedgely Avenue Bridge, that we are in the process, design process of having that bridge replaced. So that's the first one up to be used with that Act 13.
What district would that happen to be in?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. But we also have.
The Commissioner preempted me. He knew, he knew that question was coming. It's in my district.
We also be using money for the 59th Street Bridge in West Philadelphia.
I've heard of that.
That you may be interested in. We're looking at using some of the new monies that we're receiving to remove the Westmoreland Street Pedestrian Bridge, which is, I believe, in Councilwoman Sanchez's district. It's in the St. Hughes section of Philadelphia. It's a pedestrian bridge without a street next to it. So we would like to remove the bridge and put a normal street in so that we can get a connection between a school facility and a playground. And right now, the only way of getting between the two is through a footbridge that's in poor repair. It's not handicapped accessible, it's not well-lit. So we want to remove that bridge and, and put the street connection through that neighborhood. We're also looking at a bridge on LaFay Street in Bridesburg, in which the sidewalks are failing. The bridge has been infilled beneath it, and it really serves no purpose anymore as a bridge. So this would be a perfect opportunity to use this money to take a bridge out of our inventory and put a regular city street through there. It'd be one less item that we have to maintain in the future as a bridge. So we do have.
I'm glad there's a plan.
We do have a list, we do have a plan. I'll put this together in a coherent fashion.
I think, based on the councilman's interest in having public safety being a top concern for these bridges, that's apropos. Just real quick, in your capital budget, OIT is requesting $2 million FY '14 and an additional $6.4 million over the course of the capital plan for staffing? How does that, who does that?
Sorry, this isn't.
How does the OIT warrant the use of capital dollars for staffing?
There, capital, there can be staff on the capital budget that work solely.
Who else, who else? What other department?
Public property has people historically that work on capital. And it's not, we don't do it that often, but for something, we're embarking on, for something as big as what the IT program is, which is a $120 million program, multi-year program, that it makes more sense to staff those people through capital. They'll be employees that will only be needed in those jobs for a few years while they ramp up that program, and then.
Couldn't that same logic be used to deal with the backlog of capital projects? We could bill under the capital program to get additional inspectors, procurement to actually move that process along. I still have been waiting for what IT has promised as the wow factor of what they were going to do. And we'll get to that under the Operating Department, but I just want to know, for the record, why do they merit getting, when other departments need help too, to move things along, whether it's the Fire Department getting firehouses back online? Why do they merit getting extra staff when so few other departments do? And when is the whistle? I'm still waiting.
So.
I feel like Charlie Brown waiting for the great pumpkin. You know, each year they promise that, you know, it's going to get, we're going to be wowed by the future. And all I see is the technology of the past. And I'm beginning to feel like Charlie Brown about that.
Okay, so that's a two-part question.
Yes, it is.
Okay. The first, the first part is why did they merit it? We look on, look at who should be put on capital, and what departments should have people on capital. And there are actually, there are people that work on fire and police projects through public property that are on capital. The five people that I just mentioned for quality control on capital projects will be on capital. It's not, we try to, to limit it to situations where we feel like it's of utmost importance, because we're obviously paying interest, because that's bond-funded money. So, but in order to do what we want to do, and I will call Adele Beat, our Chief Technology Officer, up to go through when we're going to be wowed, which is your question. But in order to actually do what we want to do with the technology, we need a ramp-up of staff to complete the projects, and that, then those positions will no longer be with the city. Those are capital, short-term capital-funded positions.
I have a whole line of questions about that thing for OIT, when the operating.
Oh, okay.
Comes. But I just wanted to get a little preview of why do you, and how many, and what are they being used for?
Well, in terms of, I mean, I could, the staffing question is the positions, it wouldn't be fair to ask, well, IT, why, why are they getting positions? That's a central budget decision. And again, there are positions funded in, through public property that are on capital, that work on all types of city projects.
I understand public property. I'm trying to understand OIT.
So why not, I think it might help if Adele walks through what is going to happen with that money, so then you can see.
I'm waiting to be wowed.
Okay.
Just to manage expectations for a minute, I think the two and a half years that I've been here, I've never said the words "wow," but.
Neither have I.
Yeah. So I can, I can certainly answer for the projects that happened under, under my watch. So the capital program of $120 million is divided into two categories. A category that goes towards the infrastructure, making sure that we stabilize and secure the city's infrastructure, that benefits all the agencies, obviously. Then the second category is a, we call them business applications. These are applications are, that are located within a specific agency and through joint accountability process, meaning myself and the commissioner of that agency or the project director of that project, we co-manage those projects. The second category, the business applications, these are really long-term initiatives to modernize and in some cases replace or upgrade an existing process and an existing system that's been here for a long time. And sometimes you'll hear us refer to those projects as legacy systems. A good example would be human resource system, time in attendance, payroll, tax delinquency, the system that supports licensing inspections, 3-1-1, and so on. So those are all multi-year projects that are funded out of the capital program. A big portion obviously goes to the contractor, to the vendor, who is the, who wins a, an RFP, a contract, and provides the bulk of the development and implementation. But in order for that implementation to be successful, the city needs to provide subject matter experts, project management, and resources on the city side to work side-by-side with the vendor. So in going through the capital eligibility requirements, it was determined that those resources on the city side, a small portion of them, can be cap, are capital-eligible. So we've kept the number to an absolute bare bone, but these are resources that are, could really dedicate full-time attention to making sure that these projects are successful, are on time, and on budget. We did not really have the internal resources that we could sort of free up and, and have them drop everything and focus on these capital projects, which might have been what's been done in the past, which is why some of the projects in the past maybe have not come to fruition.
I'm glad you asked that. November 2012, I'm not, voters approved a charter referendum for $120 million. What this council has passed, Legislation Bill 120143, calling for a strategic plan by your office to tell us. by your office to tell us what these wonderful dollars are going to be spent on, who is going to actually implement what to give us the wow that we're seeking. Understand the language that you said, more efficient, this, that, or the other. Tell us specifically, what is your vision? Where is a plan to spend $120 million worth of debt that we acquired on their behalf? And I have no idea, not one, Mr. President, what it's going to be spent. Where's the strategic plan?
Would you like me to address that?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. So, so not only is there a strategic plan, but there's a spending plan. Happy to provide it. I think we provided it on multiple occasions. In fact, we've invited council, all members of council, on March 2012 and September of 2012, and we briefed them and walked them through what are those capital projects that we plan to spend the money on. So a good example would be, I'll talk about the eight large, we call them large projects. These are large initiatives, multi-year, multimillion-dollar in nature, and go towards some of the biggest pain points in the city. So the number one is the cashiering system that is currently run by the Department of Revenue. Cashiering system are all the point-of-sale machines that collect money over the counter and settle up at the end of the day. That, that system, not only is it old by the time we got to it, we could no longer get maintenance and support because the vendor is no longer around. That system was awarded to a top-notch company, and they are currently in the middle of development and will complete the project by December of this calendar year, 2014. Second project is the license and inspections. This is a system that you perhaps heard--
We did extensive hearings. I'm aware of that.
So that system was awarded to, again, another top-notch company, Computronics, and they are right now in phase one of the development and the implementation, and it carries an 18-months timeline. The third system is the replacement of the overall 3-1-1, and again, that was assigned to another top vendor.
Who are they?
So, so in the, in cashiering, maybe the company is Fairfax?
Where are they located?
Well-known. I, I believe they're out of Connecticut. I'm not quite sure, but I could certainly provide you with that information.
Fairfax?
Fairfax, correct. So that's for the cashiering initiative?
And how much was that awarded?
I want to say it was about 1.52.
Hmm.
The second initiative that I mentioned was the license and inspections, and that was awarded to a company called Computronics. And I believe three or four weeks ago, Commissioner Williams and the mayor had a press conference to officially kick off the initiative.
Where are they located?
I, I could provide that information. I don't have that information.
Are they a Philly-based firm?
Are they a Philly-based firm? I don't think Computronics is a Philly-based firm.
How much was that awarded?
I believe that was $5 million total cost. I have to keep in my mind the total cost versus the capital allocation.
It's about 3.5 capital.
The third initiative is 3-1-1, and that was awarded to the Salesforce.com, which is a very well-known company in the business of CRM.
Where are they located?
I think they're located in California.
How much was that?
About 4.5.
The total of the capital? The capital is 5?
Five million dollars over a term of seven years.
Is that capital money?
Yes. Capital and operating.
Combined?
It's 4.5 capital.
And the, and the balance is operating. So that's, that's a third example, and I could, I could go down the whole list if you like. There's a total of actually about 23 RFPs that have hit the street.
Can you provide to the chair your strategic plan and the breakdown of contractors? Where they, whether they're Philadelphia-based contractors? Whether there was a exercise, the look at internal to the existing employees? Whether those existing employees could perform those duties that are now contracted out? And, and what the rationale was to contract out versus keep it within, organize staff within the department?
Yes. Just one clarification. We're not contracting out work. What we're doing is we are bringing in expertise to replace, upgrade, or modify an existing system, and then in some cases, there's a bridge over to transfer knowledge, and in some other cases, there's a maintenance arrangement where the vendor continues to maintain the system.
So further, if you could provide to the chair, the amount of contracted out, and I don't mean contracted projects, versus how those companies will train existing workforce to be able to manage those systems, such as cash registers, this, that, or the other? Because what happens is often, we wind up connecting to a firm that requires us to go through their maintenance, go through their consultants, and we wind up stuck in a system. So I want to, in your strategic plan, show how we don't wind up sole-sourced to a company that provides maintenance after they install a system that only they can maintain, fix, or provide equipment for.
Just, just to be sure, nothing was sole-sourced?
No.
Yeah. These are competitive bids, and everyone has had an opportunity to--
So for example, Motorola--
Yes.
--at one point did it on a contract.
Yes.
At one point, we committed to Motorola, and then, pretty much because it was an essential part of our communications, we got stuck with Motorola as opposed to anyone else, correct? And at this point, most of that equipment is now obsolete. Is that correct?
Not correct.
All right. So is some of their equipment obsolete and they're no longer warranted? You providing warranties for it?
The, the radio initiative that was completed by, by my staff on January 2013 upgraded the entire county of Philadelphia to the latest radio communications, which includes their, the back office system, redundancy into the systems, and brand-new radios for the fire department and the police department.
So point being, are they pretty much the only game in town when it comes to radios and that type of commitment at this point?
So when it comes to radio communications, it's slightly different because you--
(noise)
Maybe that was a warning sign.
I'm sorry, Motorola. Please forgive me.
So when it, radio--
You're going out. They weren't mad at me.
So with radio communications, the, the only difference is that the, once you, once you standardize on a radio communication system, it's really not in your best interest to go and, but that, that's a very different example from some of the projects that I've mentioned.
So my only question was, show me that we aren't heading down that path by way of flexibility if we choose or want to explore other vendors, so that we don't get locked into something that we can't get out of. I think that's the--
That's the new--
We can provide a response to that.
That's the new timer, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr.--
Yeah. We can provide a response.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. My main debate could be more of a point of information as a follow-up to--
Okay.
Sure. It's the one question. Thank you. My statement or question may be a point of information as a follow-up to Councilman Jones' line of questioning. I do recall in last week, when we kicked start at this marathon season called Budget Hearings, that a specific request was made of X number of departments, and I do believe that the Office of Innovation and Technology was included, where the request was, is as follows. Provide for us, in your testimony, the breakdown of all contracts above $250,000. Period. That's number one. Number two, of the total contracts, indicate the percentage that are federal, the percentage that are state, and the percentage of those total contracts that are local. That then gives us a clear picture of how much money is being handled, dealt with, provided to, given opportunity to local Philadelphia businesses. Because we are disturbed when we get a, a list of contracts and 50, 60, 70, 80% of them are folks who live outside the city.
Hmm.
Folks who have no business residence in the city. That's unacceptable to us, when there's a 25% poverty rate in Philadelphia. So the following departments are, and I'll repeat them as follows. Department of Public Property, Department of Human Services, Prisons, Aviation, Water Department, Health Department, Office of Innovation and Technology, Behavioral Health, Mental Retardation Services. When I look at this list of contracts and the volume, net number of contracts that are executed, we now need to drill down and see what that picture really looks like a few levels down.
Right. I, we appreciate your request. That's weird. It's not working correctly. We appreciate your request, and I do have a template for the information that I wanted to touch base with you afterwards to see if that, if it looked right in terms of capturing all of that information.
Sure. And that then minimizes the line of questioning that is going to come from councilmembers like Jones. It's one thing to hear it, it's another thing to see it in black and white.
Right. That's right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Councilor.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a quick question for Commissioner Perry.
Good afternoon.
Quick question for you. When we met during the hearing that Councilman Johnson had regarding railways and such, one of the questions that was asked was regarding the ownership of the, the rail lines and the property directly abutting those, those lines and, and surrounding it. And I think you were going to get us a list of who owned what in our individual districts? You said you had that information available?
Yes. Good afternoon, Dave Perry, Streets Commissioner. We are working on breaking down that list into individual council districts and putting it into a format that is easily searchable and understandable. We will have that by our operating budget hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We have no other members teed up. So with that, I want to thank you very much for your testimony today, and we will stand in recess until Monday, March 31st at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1774.42]